So we called the meeting to order. Are there any formal kinds of presentations from staff? Or we really wanted to open it up to discussion?
Just like last time, was this open up to discussion tonight? And anything on the parking realm or the public realm standards? Or the parking standards you have questions about or want to make comments about? And then I also would like to circle back with some of the previous work sessions we've had. Just to talk about, you know, if there's anything else that you would like us to kind of give you some input on, if you want to have suggest any changes? If there's some strong feeling about those things that we can bring you back information? We can do that too. So those are the things on the agenda tonight.
All right, thank you Karen. With that, we'll bring it to the commission. Let's start with the public realm standards. Any questions or comments? A couple of detail things Karen, it references like some city standards in places for like furniture and things like that. Some of those things aren't maybe settled quite yet. Is that accurate or they are?
Well, those would be things that we're referring to in other parts of city code. So when we're talking about the public realm, we're really talking about the public right of way. And so the public right of way, of course, has a lot of other regulations that affect that. So when we refer to city standards, then we're referring to some other parts of the city code.
But we don't define things like page seventy refers to all street furniture must meet city codes. Do we define those things now or does that become?
So if there is a, like for example, right downtown, we have an adopted streetscape plan. So any redevelopment have to match the street furniture that the city has, like the decorative lights that we have. So when we're talking about the improvements that have to be made for a development project between the building and the street curb, then they would need to match an adopted streetscape plan. If there's not an adopted streetscape plan, there's probably not a lot of street furniture that we're talking about in those areas that'd be out in the neighborhoods. Then we're just talking about street trees. And then this code is to address. It says free to development site.
Okay. Other comments on the public realm? We also have Mary and Jeff here if we have questions. Mary and Jeff, just a general question for you. What issues do you typically see with this section? It seems pretty straightforward. But any issues they see or options you think that we should be discussing?
Um, no, the, uh, this is Jeff Farrell. The, um, no, the standards are really dealing with what happens from the face of the building out to the curb. And I guess where they're, where we have seen issues in the past, they've been, well, they've been dealt, where there've been issues with coordination, which didn't happen here. We had a meeting with the, uh, the city arborist and Karen and also a landscape architect who's a part of the team that did the, uh, the range redo.
Parkade.
Yeah, the parkade. Sorry, I have a couple of brain cells missing where the word parkade should be. So we talked very specifically about all the standards for, for the list of trees and the standards for planting, et cetera. So that's well coordinated.
Thank you.
Um, I will, I will add one other thing. Again, we didn't hear any questions about this in Cedar Falls, but in some other places where there has a lot of landscaping standards for, for what happens on the private property, people ask about that. And what we have seen, because this is really an urban context, you know, especially for the core of downtown, the idea is rather than, you know, having landscaping buffers and shrubs all over the property, it's much more beneficial to make sure that you get viable street trees and so that the public realm is, is where you're getting that benefit rather than getting developers to invest in a lot of landscape on the property since most of the property has the potential to have a building on it anyway. We didn't really get questions about that. I think through this, this whole visioning and code writing project, but in some other communities that that has been a question, you know, why aren't we making people do a lot of planting on their property? And in this context, that really doesn't make sense.
Remind me, are those, are those standards consistent across all the different districts or different? I don't remember.
Uh, yes, they are. There actually, there's, there's, and my mind's racing to find where, there's some tiny differences in what happens in the dooryard, which makes sense. That's the, the, the small or not so small front yard. But, but basically they're simple enough and they're concentrated on what's really happening in the street that that, that level of simplicity works.
Another slight difference Jeff is on page seventy-two. There's the highlighting about having a continuous planted tree lawn versus having in the, like on the parkade where you actually will have some type of bridge paving. You still need to have the pits for the tree roots, but what actually happens in the space between the sidewalk and the curb in the neighborhood areas is probably going to be planted rather than having pervious pavers or something like that.
That's good to point out and I would add, that's an, that's an option. The code doesn't say you have to do one way or the other. So I imagine, well, some people might choose from the beginning if they know they're, they have retail and it's going to be a very busy area. But I imagine most of these will, will start out with this being open soil, but it is possible in those situations as the city might grow or change that those are, those are modified. If there's a really intense pedestrian traffic in an area, it'll, it might cause problems and you'd start to get mud instead of grass, then you can switch to doing the bridge pavement or the pervious paving.
Great, thank you Jeff. Any other comments on that section? All right, let's move on to, uh, let's move on to the parking and loading. Thoughts? We never get any comments about parking.
I was just going to say, I feel like I should make a really bad joke about parking, but I will wait to see if you have questions.
I guess I'd like some feedback and it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but you know, we talk about parking more than anything else probably here in terms of development. And there are really two mindsets. We don't have enough or we have too much. And there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of gray in between, it seems like. So give us some just general thoughts on that. How do we address those things? You know, because you deal with this all over the place, I'm sure.
That's, I'll go first and then Mary can clean up. It's, it's, it's a hard problem and it's, uh, it's in a good sense of the word political because it's the citizens, the stakeholder, everybody figuring out how they're gonna, how they're gonna move forward, how, how their lives are going to be led. And to some sense, at a certain level of intensity, the parking just gets in the way, having too much parking and, and the walkability, things are within, there, there's so many things within a five or a two-minute walk that people, it's, it's actually more bother to use the cars. When you're, when you're on that end of the spectrum, this, this question is pretty easy. You know, cities like that, those parts of cities are able to change their rules and nobody notices. But the issue is when you're trying to go toward that, but you know, from here to there and that in-between is just bound to be difficult. And it is, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg. And it, it's, it's going to be a public, I think, conversation and discourse, you know, all, all the way and to that end. But we know, we know the way people use, use and view automobiles is changing, but we don't know how much. So I, it's, it, I don't mean it to be a cop out to say it's a process, but that's kind of the bottom line.
Um, I don't, I'm not going to try to clean up. I want to add a couple of things about what we attempted to do with the standards. We, we started much more aggressively and, and we've kind of stepped back a little bit because we were advocating to even go much, much slower or much lower, building on the downtown parking study and the development scale that we had looked at. But I think as the discussion earlier about College Hill, we definitely think downtown should be a park once environment. I think the bad joke is that everybody wants more parking and they want the parking, they need to be free, they don't want to pay for it, they think somebody else should pay for it. So that's always the question. There's a, there's a book that's been out about 10 years now by Donald Shoup out of California called, There's No Such Thing As Free Parking. So, so that's the question, whatever parking you have, somebody is paying for it somewhere. So, so how do you get that parking developed? So one of the biggest things that we have proposed here is the concept of shared parking. That is to, to get away from, if, if the private sector is going to build the parking, to get away from the idea that if I build my parking, my parking is my parking 24/7/365 and nobody else can use it because that's the most detrimental type of parking you can have in the city. You know, big surface lots or private drugs is locked up that are only used eight, 12, 16 hours a day when they could be used much, much more broadly. So that the concept of having reserved parking that people have to meet for their residents, their tenants, et cetera, and then the additional component of the shared parking. So what we've attempted to do is lower the requirement for reserved parking and then introduce the idea of shared parking so that parking that gets developed in the city can be used by multiple users, whether they're someone going to an office, whether it's somebody visiting someone in one of the residences, whether it's people going to a restaurant, just that there would be more publicly available parking in addition to what's already on the street. We know there's a lot of ongoing debate and discussion about making parking spaces on the street, you know, with meters and who's going to pay and the surface lots that are block or two away and how much they are. I know that the parking study looked at that quite a bit and we tried to plug into that. But it seems that if there's going to be more development in downtown, whether it's residential office, retail, restaurants, the current amount of parking will be insufficient to support new development. So the question is, if you want the new development to come in, how do you provide parking for that? There's no absolute magic formula. How many parking spaces people need? There, there is a belief, I believe that the, the market will corral it somewhat. If my spouse and I want a two-bedroom condo and we have two cars, we're going to look for a place that we can park our two cars. But if my spouse and I want to live somewhere and we have one child who doesn't have a car, but we have three bedrooms, we don't want to have to provide three parking spaces. So, you know, where that balance is and how you figure out, if I want to have a parking space and it doesn't come with this unit, then I'm not going to rent that unit or I'm not going to buy that unit. But people are afraid of, of sort of taking that leap and letting the market control to some extent. Everybody wants to make sure there's enough parking right now. That's sort of big, big picture. The numbers are higher for commercial than you currently have because that's zero and lower for residential because right now that's, that's what's been the big sort of, our understanding and one of the big points of negotiation for bringing more residential into downtown. So we've tried to strike a balance there. I don't know if Karen wants to elaborate anymore. We, we've had many, many, many discussions, conversations, adjusted ideas about what this agenda should be before we put the public draft out.
The other comment that I would have is that we did, and I know Mary and Jeff looked at it pretty carefully, the parking study that was done downtown. And, you know, that was done and looked at, you know, actually counted parking, the different times, try to figure out when the peak parking times were, how much the private lots were filled at different times. And did look specifically at, say for River Place, they looked at, you know, they've got the big parking lot behind, how much that was filled up, how much was empty and tried to gauge a little bit both on the public side and the private side, what the peak times were and also what did we overpark? And I think the parking study pretty clearly showed that the, the residential parking was overparked. And so sometimes the parking is just in the wrong location. And some, the other thing that came out of the parking study was that a lot of the parking was locked up on private lots. And so some of the ideas out of the parking study is how do you unlock, you know, we've got banks downtown that are only open during, you know, and then the evening hours were the peak hours. And so then it, those lots were empty, basically people couldn't park there, but yet there was more need for parking. So, and also the Viking Pump Lot. So there was a lot, there's a lot in that parking study of recommendations about both how we manage a shared parking system downtown with public parking and also what should we do on the private side with the zoning? And one of the recommendations in the parking study was to, to then look at the zoning and right-size the parking requirement on the private lot, but then look to the shared parking idea for visitors downtown, for commercial downtown, so that we didn't overpark things that then really couldn't be used during the peak hours when there was a parking crunch. So, you know, it's, it's a complicated problem and we've tried to come up with kind of a, an answer here. So, you know, we're open to having discussions about where we landed on this, but we feel like we've tried, tried to hit, hit a certain balance here with what we, we saw and heard during the vision process and also the parking study.
All right, other questions from commissioners? Karen, it might be good to, uh, we have a few new members of the commission, might be good to pull that parking study out and send everyone a link.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Uh, can you tell me how, does this impact existing properties? Existing private properties?
So what I would say is the existing properties, if the parking ratios are lower than what they were before, you know, you could potentially have more development potential for individual properties. But given the fact that there's a lot of properties that are already developed downtown, it really probably mostly affects redevelopment that occurs. I don't know if Mary and Jeff can speak to that? Do you have some thoughts about that?
Well, Karen, it's on, uh, on page seventy-seven, what is it? C, general urban, general urban to storefront frontages. We did a couple of things expressly, I think, to try to address that head-on, which was that any of the buildings that are on the parkade that exist currently, they're exempt from these standards. So we just sort of made that proposal upfront, just so that there, we heard about many of them having space upstairs and then they couldn't rent it as apartments, even though people wanted it because they couldn't provide parking onsite because their building covers 100% of a lot. So the idea that those historic buildings on the parkade, people should be able to use them without the burden of onsite parking. So that was just, that's C1. The other thing that we said within these, the core downtown area, if they have an existing commercial building and they aren't adding residential, they would also be exempt from meeting the parking. But if they were bringing in residential, then they needed to figure out how to accommodate that. There is also, now I need to look for it, in the achieving parking, which is item five on page seventy-eight, it does say that the reserve parking doesn't have to be onsite. So like in the downtown where you have an alley, if you have the ability to have it adjacent or across the alley, you can also achieve it offsite. The shared parking could be basically within a walking distance, about two blocks away. So we tried to figure out ways to make sure that it didn't damage any existing buildings, that they could continue functioning and those on the parkade could make sure their upper floors were usable. So it's, it's sort of a tiered system for lack of a better description.
Yeah, that's a really good point because we wanted to make sure, you know, so one of the primary goals of the vision plan was to help preserve, you know, the downtown core, those, those beautiful storefront buildings that we have and allow people to use them and reuse them over time. So we didn't want any incentive here with this parking to, for people to tear down buildings, for example, that people treasure.
All right, any other comments? How about regarding previous sections or any Karen, anything you want to bring up or does any commissioners have on the previous sections?
Well, I know that a number of you have had questions and comments about some previous sections and I didn't know if your, your questions had been answered or whether they were, if you were feeling like there needs to be a tweak to the code, if you're feeling strongly about some of those items that were brought up previously. I believe that Kyle brought up the issue of what about some of those office uses along the west side of Overman Park? Do we need to look at, for example, adjusting the regulating plan just to, to address that? That was one comment that I remember was made. And then Brad, you made the comment about design review and, you know, if it's something that you'd like us to, you know, I don't have any answers tonight, but if you want us to provide more information or if you're suggesting a change might be needed, we can bring you some pros and cons back at like your next meeting so we can kind of look at those things more carefully. But I couldn't always tell if you just got your questions answered and you were fine with it or whether you wanted some additional or you wanted some changes in the code.
Um, I, I feel pretty strongly about Franklin and Third there around Overman Park. And after the last meeting, I've been by there a number of times, just, it's a small enough town, you can't miss some spots. But I was also concerned about Franklin going down towards, uh, Fourth Street and even Fifth Street. And after going through there again, definitely less concerned about that, mainly just that area around Overman Park. I just, I can't think of a reason not to have that, uh, the, the, the south and west side of Overman Park merge with that, uh, what is it called? The general, general two, general urban two, right?
Okay, so we will, you know, Jeff and Mary will put their heads together here and we'll come back with kind of a, an analysis of that particular request and give you some pros and cons on why yes or no, is this a good idea? And then you guys can kind of decide what direction you want to.
And then on, on the question about when the time and place would be for commission to review a project, I, I, I agree with Brad that there needs to be some standard there or a line that, you know, a precedent, you know, based on whatever, I'm less certain about. So I guess, I think it would be good if, you know, the commission had some options based on real world scenarios, whether it be, you know, project size or, you know, different priorities of location, you know, between these character districts, if there are more freedoms in some than others. I don't know if that needs to be complicated, but I think just some options to consider or suggestions on how to structure that would be good. And the clarity is obvious, the clarity on that is obviously important because we don't want to have to continue to review all of these plans if the whole idea of this form-based system is to get away from all of that. But, but there's a time and a place and, uh, I guess it'd be good to have some proposals there.
Any thoughts Brad about that or what you were kind of thinking about?
Yeah, I would agree. I, I, you know, I think this is intended to, I think the code is really good about dealing with most of the issues, but I do think significant projects and how you define that, I don't know, is it size, is it, is it what, but, uh, is it district? But, you know, there are projects when, you know, we talked about the challenges of legislating design and I guess the intent behind design review for some projects would, would be that for me, that, that we had the opportunity to give some feedback on those significant projects or projects in significant areas without complicating it too much. It doesn't have to be this commission, it could be Main Street, it could be, I don't know, again, I think we're looking for.
Okay. All right, do you have any kind of thought, anybody have thoughts about what might be the trigger to a design review process? Like what kind of, uh, certain areas that would trigger it, certain like new developments and sizes? Do you have, you know, anything that you have some direction on that or thoughts on that?
Well, I think the closer you get to the core, the more sensitive, uh, everyone might be if something is, if something's done wrong, it's easy to point out something wrong in retrospect. I mean, just offhand, I feel like the simplest approach would be either percentage of, percentage improvements of dollars or some sort of a scale like that. And there were some examples, I think there's generic examples given based on what had been done in other communities. Some had none, some had extensive scenarios, some were based on dollars or size or size of site or whatever. Maybe our, maybe our experts have had some feedback after some of these things have been implemented and, you know, some of those approaches worked better than others. I don't know that, we, we want to be something, but we, I don't think it's in anybody's interest to be too heavy-handed with it.
Okay. So Jeff and Mary, is that enough information? We can kind of think about that and maybe come up with some options or things that you've seen in other places?
I, I did want to make a, a point that people should also be thinking about what aspects of the code would be opened up. And I guess inherent in that is I'm recommending, you don't say, what's the term, Katie bar the door? I don't know what that means, but you don't just open up everything because as we know, and I'm, I have to, I'm educated as an architect and so is Mary, even though we don't practice working on buildings, but architects can be really persuasive. So as a board, I, you'd want to be careful that Mr. Personality, which is not me, doesn't, you know, come in and make a great sales. I've worked for people like that. Make this great presentation and convince you with great drawings that something's wonderful and find out that, you know, there's been some big mistake. I, I think the idea of identifying some things that you would give extra leeway on and, and, and identify some things that are, no, this is, you know, th- this is a line in the sand. So they're, they're different, different parts of the code and, and I'd say consider
One more thing, if you don't mind, you used the word leeway and something that as, as I've read through this and read through parts again and just thought through scenarios in my mind, because that's the best way to, I guess, to witness test this, is just to run these what ifs. And, uh, when we're talking about leeway, at what point, we've got these minimum standards set, a lot of it is, is aimed at reducing gray area, but there still is some. And I guess at what point does something become a variance and, and at what point is something leeway? And how much of that leeway is, you know, internal discretion? And then I guess my follow-up to that is if there's a, if there's a disagreement to the path forward for a proposal, still, still worth the same where, uh, where, where we go, where a project would go through these minimum standards and if there's sort of a disagreement that they still have an option to, you know, propose it to the commission and city council, like a site plan might be approved. be approved, um, now. Just, uh, just a question or maybe something to, uh, consider.
You were saying it's a slippery slope, right? Talking about.
Well, yeah, I guess, and, and maybe just to understand that, maybe just some, just some examples or scenarios, uh, of, of, uh, when that, when or how that leeway might be granted and then at what point it'd be, um, at what point where it wouldn't really be legal to do, because we have all of these minimum, minimum standards.
I think we're looking for some advice, uh, based on what you've seen elsewhere. Uh, we understand the complexity of the issue and we, we don't certainly wanna turn back into what we are now, you know, which is everything has to come, because if you set one exception, that, you know, all of a sudden everyone's asking for an exception.
Right.
Um, so, um, yeah, if you have any advice on that, uh, or if you have none and say, you know, this, this, this doesn't work, then I think we wanna hear that, too.
Um, am I on? Yes. A couple of things, uh, but I think, I think we'll work with Karen and try to give you a couple of scenarios, et cetera. But, um, I am not familiar with your, uh, Board of Appeals or BZA. I always forget which communities have which names. But, um, in some places, we, we may just wanna remind everybody, there is an actual legal standard for a variance, which sometimes people, uh, choose to ignore and some, uh, appeal boards ignore altogether. And I don't know your board, so I don't know if they give out variances like candy, but, but, um, if it's a true variance, then they should go through that route. But I think, I think we, you wanna, you wanna try to keep people out of the variance realm if possible. Um, then I, I think the scenarios is probably a good thing to, to think about. We have in previous shretts, uh, we have had some local architects beta-test the code for us and, and have, you know, what's the ugliest building you can design under these standards? And that was really helpful to try to figure out. Are there, are there loopholes or are there things that make sense for the leeway, et cetera? Um, I'm not advocating we try to do that in the next couple of weeks, but, um, we can think up scenarios ourselves, but those of you as particularly who are, are architects, if you think, if you've already thought of some scenarios, that would be useful for us to hear as well.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, I just wanna break the, the silence on the, on the parking thing. I, I've been through that about a dozen times and, and I think it's a, it's, uh, it's an impossible task to decide where to draw that line. And, uh, to me, it looks on the lean side, um, but it's, it is a minimum and, you know, we've gotta choose if we want this to be a hot place to be. It's, parking's always gonna be a challenge. And, uh, and I just, I just think the work that went into this and the, uh, and the numbers, I, I personally, I think they look great.
Yeah, I would echo that to a degree that I like the, uh, what you did with parking. I guess I think it's too lean. It needs to be a little more aggressive as far as requirements. Uh, that's why I want some more examples. Uh, I know I'd asked for Iowa City earlier. I know they have parking ramps that we don't, you know, currently have. So I'm kind of wrestling with that of where to draw the line, because like Brad said, it's always the elephant in the room, you know? And I think the parking problem is part perception, but part of its reality and how do we come up with the right code for the, we can use boards and everyone can decide.
As I've wrestled with it and kind of considered scenarios, I feel like, uh, if there's a, a threshold, uh, I feel like having, being a little bit, uh, undersupplied for parking is better than being oversupplied for parking. Um, perfect example, I guess, is College Square. Um, and, uh, and if you think of any districts that you go to, Iowa, like, you know, Iowa City or Galena or any number of places like that, uh, you know, it's, it's not uncommon to have to walk a block or two to get to where you're going. And there aren't too many times a year during the course of a week where it's as big a problem as, as, uh, it's often made to be. Um,
All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Karen, anything else that you or staff have?
Um, I don't think so. Um, certainly reach out to me if you think of something and you have a question that you would like to be addressed at the next work session. Um, you know, give me a call, too, if you have, wanna discuss something. Uh, we know this is a, is a lot of information. So, um, it's good to get these things, uh, taken care of early in the process while we're reviewing this, rather than have them come up, you know, later. So we do appreciate, um, your time and, and looking at this carefully.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your, um, for your hard work on this. Uh, not an easy thing that we're doing. Uh, but, uh, we appreciate the effort and the process that went through to get to it. So, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I hope so. We're, we're gonna be here all night. Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.